All right, hi, everyone. Let's open the meeting of the Mount Pili-Roxbury Board of School Directors at 6:33 on February 17. First order of business is public comment. Have any? Looks like none. Great, so we can move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do we need to take roll, Jim?
Oh, we do need to take roll. I keep forgetting that. There's a new Zoom thing. Jill?
Here.
Emma?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Annika?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Nia?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
And Amanda? Great. Thanks for reminding me of that. Now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Great. Jill?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Nia?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
And Amanda?
Yeah.
Great. So now we have Penny Chamberlain, Scott Griggs, Mike Dewees, glad to see back, who not only helped cut his teeth, but also helped us find Libby. It's good to see you again. And is Cal Hapwood on as well? I see him on the agenda, but I'm not sure I see his square.
It may be Clifton Long. He's our plumbing instructor.
Oh, Clifton Long, yeah, okay. Yeah, talk about the Central Vermont Career Center visioning and governance. So I will turn it over to all of you and thank you. And if you need care of screen or anything, I think Libby is, Libby or Anna are the keeper of those tools.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, I just wanted to apologize. I'm gonna have my camera off because my eyes hurt a lot because I've been in Zoom all day. So I wanted to let you know that I am paying attention, but I need to not be in the screen right now.
No worries.
That's perfectly understandable. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, well, I appreciate your time this evening on your agenda. You know, you've got a full agenda here this evening. The state law requires that if a career center is looking at a change in potential governance, that we need to present to each of our sending school district boards and review why we would like to go into a study to look at this and then have some Q and A time as well with you folks tonight and then actually take some action. And what I'd like to do is first, I want to know, have folks been able to review the documents that were sent ahead of time in the board packet? And most importantly is the packet that had a cover memo from me that had the board, the CBCC Governance Report, and then a chart that followed that. There was a chart that went along with that. I won't necessarily do a shot if you're in good shape with that, okay?
Yeah, appreciate how thorough that was. Thank you.
It's been, we've been doing this, looking at this for probably two years, two and a half years now. And we started to look at governance and our re-envisioning process at the same time. They were side by side and we were talking about the future of CBCC. Where were we gonna go and what would we want to include for programming to serve our region? And we were looking at all of these things. And then we realized that governance and re-envisioning for the future of CBCC can run side by side. They can, one can exist without the other or both exist together. So it's not something that has to happen. Governance does not have to happen in order to have a center in another location or to do a renovation to the current location. And nor would we have to have a new governance model or different governance model to be in a different location. So they do run parallel to each other. What we're looking at in the governance model, the main driver at this juncture in our investigation and why we're coming to all of you to have this conversation, we're headed into a budget vote in March. And our region, all of you and our other five schools pay a tuition for students to attend the Central Vermont Career Center. But only Berry Town and Berry City voters have the authority to approve that budget, which then sets that tuition because they are our governing board. That's the way it's set up in law at this time. And in order to move away from that and become our own governance structure, which would mean that all of our sending schools, all of our sending districts would have equal voice and vote on that budget and input, we would need to actually go through this formal process to request to move into a study. And then that study committee would work toward the end of this school year with Mike Dewees and I both working with them and looking at all aspects of governance and looking at the pros and cons of governance and looking at what does that mean? And then coming up with a proposal that would come back to the boards before it moved on to Secretary French and/or the State Board of Education. So what we found as our biggest challenges with the Career Center is that the regional advisory board is required in state statute as well for career centers. And that's a board that Libby serves on as a representative of the Mont Pili School District, Mont Pili-Roxbury. And we have other superintendent and school board members who are members of that regional advisory board as well. And it is just an advisory board, only has advisory capacity and can make a recommendation to the Berry Unified Union School District Governing Board. But that board does not have to accept that recommendation. So right now, the voice is advisory. And we would prefer to have that voice be equal for the Career Center across all our entire region. So in our process with boards at this time, we've met with and received approval from the Berry Unified Union School District to move forward with a study. Union 32 District also, Washington Central, has approved that. And it is just a study. It's just a chance to investigate what this means and what this could mean for our center. So we're presenting to you folks tonight and then we will be presenting to Cabot, Twinfield, and Harwood in March. So sometime around the end of March, early part of April, if three out of the five boards, I'd prefer five out of five, but if three out of the five boards agreed to move forward with the study committee, then we would start on that as soon as possible and begin to dissect and look into these issues or concerns and pros and cons of being our own governing board. The chart that's at the back of the packet that was sent in your board packet, which was attached to the Governance Report, Governance White Paper, is a chart where we got some feedback from the current, the three current technical centers that are their own governing board. And that's River Valley and Bennington and Middlebury. And it more so than not, it works out very well for them for the reasons that I was just describing. But there's also other reasons behind having your own governing board. And that would be to have a board that's purely focused on technical education and tech ed rules and regs. What we find and what we know is that technical education regulation and pre-K-12 regulation and law tends to run side by side within the state of Vermont. They all have their own set of books, if you will, from everything from finance to staffing to program development. It's all slightly separate. It's slightly different between the two different systems. The only time that those systems converge typically is within underneath that governing board. With Act 46 now coming through to fruition for everyone, districts are larger. So now there is less time at that governing board level to be providing more guidance and support for career and tech ed because now they're a larger district, smaller board, and more students in schools to oversee. So basically, what we would propose with the, looking into the governance system here or a potential change, it would give your voice, your equal voice with the Career Center. You'd have a voice with program approval, admissions, program design, curriculum, policy development and implementation, determining the center budget in detail and those program needs, recruitment and retention of qualified staff, marketing and recruitment for students, grades nine through 12, outreach across all sectors of this, of our region. We would still continue to serve this, this region. Middle school career awareness for all sending regions is another big area that we would really like to spend more, some more time and get into and maybe divert some resources toward that as well. Establishing perhaps, perhaps board committees that could take on some focus charges and provide, allow for full decision-making authority as a board versus being in an advisory capacity as the regional advisory board is today. So I'd like to ask Clifton and/or Scott if they would like to chime in with anything they'd like to add to that before we opened for questions and answers on that particular topic?
Well, I would like to add something if I may. So thank you very much for having us. So I'm Clifton Long. I teach plumbing and heating. And I'm a former member of the Washington Village School Board and a former chair of the Orange North Supervisor Union Board before they merged with Northfield. And you know, to me, one of the things of great value in Vermont is the close connection between community and public education. I mean, to me, community and public education are inseparable in Vermont. So I feel like the fact that we're governed by Berry Board, by the Berry Board, kind of denies us the full involvement of the other communities that we serve. So, so to me, it's, this is absolutely worth some investigation. And you know, I think that we have a lot to gain from a board's full involvement. And so, you know, we're a relatively small part of Berry and they understandably, as they should, focus more on the pre-K-12 regular education system. So I think we would really value a dedicated board that, where we could invite the members in, have them get to know us, get to know our teachers, our students, our curriculum. And you know, board membership tends to change rather slowly and that continuity is really valuable to the administration, to the teachers. So I feel like if I were in your position, I would definitely, you know, support this study. And then, you know, there are many questions to be answered that can be, if it's pursued. Thank you.
This is Scott speaking and Penny, I would know, you might not have noticed that Cal has joined us as well, so.
Oh, great.
What is, yeah. I would just mention it's, this is gonna age me a little bit, but it's my 23rd year in Berry and 20th at, at the Career Center. And I say that because I would say we've enjoyed the good graces of Berry District all these years. But by the same token, it's clearly a stretch for them to, in all aspects of operation, to truly understand us and, and support us. So when we look at this opportunity as really, and the decision point tonight being really just, do you think about this enough that it's worth, worth the study? Then I would, you know, I would strongly suggest it's worth the study. And to me, it's a plus. Berry has already approved it and given some good thought into that. And not because they don't want to support us, but in fact, because they want to continue to support us in a different way. So it's an opportunity potentially in front of us. And I would suggest it at least worth, at least worth going forward with a study.
Thank you, Scott. Cal, would you like to chime in on this?
Hey, everybody. My name's Cal Hapwood. I teach the second year Digital Media Arts Program. And you know, not much else to say. I guess I would, I would just strongly suggest that you all consider the, the study here. This is only my third year teaching full-time here, so I'll kind of speak as the, the new person. But you know, from, from what I'm seeing in career and technical education, it's, it's, it's been very eye-opening. And I think this process of being kind of, you know, governing ourselves would allow for more transparency with all the, the schools that send students to us. So I think this would really just benefit everybody. So hopefully you'll consider it.
Thank you, Cal. I think if we would, if you want to stay with this topic, we could move through this topic. And then I could move into answering any questions around this topic, then into enrollment. The historical enrollment data that you received, which shows some really nice growth for Mont Pili. I do have some post-secondary data for your, on your students that I could share as well and as well as some co-op work-based learning information, if that's of interest of this board. Would you like to continue with this particular topic before we move into something else?
I'm certainly interested. Does anyone want to move into something else or hear more?
Andrew has his hand raised.
Does he? Oh, Andrew, yes, sorry.
However, you want to do this is fine, but can you, as you move through this, can you contextualize how this study fits into this larger process of moving to a governance committee? Like, what does that entire process look like? And you might have sent that and I might have overlooked it in the materials. And a, a general question that will probably get answered during that explanation is, other than us voting on this study committee, would there be, say, say, say the districts wanted to proceed with this, would the districts be voting again on, on these issues? You know, like what is, I just don't understand what the entire process looks like. I haven't given much thought to this, so thank you.
Surely. I'll talk about the timeline component. Once the study committee is done, which is gonna be a relatively short period of time, about six weeks or so, six to eight weeks with one meeting a week. And we hope that by June and July, somewhere in that window, that we would have the results of that study committee available to come back to the boards and inform the boards where we are. The next step would be to move that on to Secretary Dan French. If there's support from him to move forward and actually put that on the State Board of Education agenda, that could move into roughly September, October. How long it stays on that agenda, depending on what they ask for additional questions, would be another piece with the State Board of Ed. Conceptually, if we were to move into our own governance model, it could be as, as late as FY '23. It would take some time. So this is the first initial stages of just looking into and investigating this possibility for the Central Vermont Career Center. I will say that, yeah, go ahead.
So is this the only item in the process that this board would be? I'm just trying to figure out where our role is in this process. So obviously, I understand with regard to the study committee, but I'm just thinking, you know, clearly you guys have thought a lot about this. The study committee will be helpful to inform how you proceed with this. But it seems like you're kind of on that track already. So I'm just wondering, you know, and I really don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm asking, you know, what, what is our role in this, in this process, moving through those different tiers? Clearly, the Board of Education and Secretary of Education have a role as you've outlined it.
Correct. They have the, the, the role to say whether or not we could actually put this in front of all 16 towns to vote. So there has to be a town vote on this process as well. Your role right now is to hopefully grant us to move forward into the study committee process, appoint a board member who would be willing to be part of that process, who then could come back and inform you as you go and, and keep you in the loop there. And then our results would have to go back to our current governing board, which is the Berry Unified Union School District and the regional advisory board. And in the regional advisory board, you have Libby as a representative as well there. So you'll still get information as to where we are in the committee. The committee comes forward with a, with a positive proposal saying this is something we should look at proposing as a change in a governance structure for Central Vermont Career Center to Secretary French. Then it goes into his hands and moves through his process along with the State Board of Education. If the State Board of Education decides that, yes, that's, that's agreeable to them, this sounds like this would work for our, our center and our region, then we embark on the process of outreach and communicating with all 16 towns and getting this onto a, a town vote to move into that new governance structure. So the process is quite involved, quite lengthy. And the study itself is the, the smaller component at the beginning to hopefully answer some questions. I did have a question from, a couple of questions from the Washington Central Board wanting to know, what is the impact of something like this on their school board? What might they expect and is there a financial impact? And there isn't a financial impact, nor would the school board need to take on additional business. Hence, the new governing board would be the one to take on the, the governing business of the Career Center, much like you do for the Mont Pili-Roxbury District. And there is, there is no additional financial cost, only that you're in, you're gonna have a voice from this point forward or that point forward on what the Career Center offers and how it functions and which makes sense if we're gonna be a regional Career Center. So that's the length of the timeline. I think it will clarify more for me as I get further into this process because I haven't gone through a process like this yet myself either.
Thank you so much. And also, thank you for all the hard work you all are doing. I know a lot of, a lot of kids and families and people who have really benefited from the Career Center. So, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for that.
Emma?
Yeah, I'll just echo the thanks and praise of the Career Center. We're very lucky to have it as part of our community and the students are very lucky to have that as an option. To me, it looks like, you know, there's so much great thought and effort put into this proposal. And since there's already support from Berry and U32, I feel like, I mean, I'm still interested in hearing more. But I mean, I would be to, to make a motion. I don't know if that's, if now is an appropriate time.
I think for your board, it's, it's fine. Every would love to do that and we can continue the conversation and answer questions. There are two actions. One would be the motion to begin this, to join the study committee. And then the second would be to appoint a board member to represent your district on that committee.
Do we feel we're ready for that or do you want to hear more from the presenters? So we've got Amanda and Jill with their hands up. Amanda?
Yeah, I was looking at the enrollment. And again, you know, thank you so much. I echo what everybody's praises of all of that you did and all of that you do. But I'm curious about the enrollment. I was looking at the charts. Do you guys have this equation of data in terms of race and ethnicity of who's attending from, as, as a whole, gender? Like, what kind of data are you collecting around demographics?
We actually have all of that data in our state database. We enter that into the state database twice a year, in October and again in March. I don't have those reports at hand, but yes, we do have that. And we look at that frequently. We definitely look at gender. There's, there's a measure and benchmark that we're held to, all career centers are held to actually, that's related to non-traditional participation, where females are participating in a, in a typical male-focused career path and vice versa. And we, some of our funding through Perkins is actually attached to that, improving those percentages within the program. And we have a data team that focuses on this information as well. So we do have the ability to pull that information. So I'm glad you're asking that because not many people ask us that question.
And is that, is that data that you can share with us that we can access or is that?
Well, we can, we could pull reports from that state database. I will say the state database is a bit antiquated. So what we do is pull that information into our own access database. And if you wanted to send Libby, or you could send it directly to me, but if you wanted to send her an email with the field that you're interested in, we'd be glad to pull that together for you.
That would be great. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for all the work that you're doing.
With the, with the check that the end size may be very small. And so it may not be public data because it's very small end sizes. That would be the only thing I thought to that, to that data.
Does that mean that the school board members cannot have access to data like that either?
It depends on what the question is that we're answering, just because we can't give identifiable, identifiable data
Information.
to a public entity, yeah.
For, for, for the, and I'm not just asking for Mont Pili, but for Washington, like Central. So it's like more than just our district.
You mean Washington County?
Washington County, yeah.
Oh, that, that would be different. The inside would be much larger. Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Jill?
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm excited to hear what comes out of this. I am definitely ready to make a motion. I'm hopeful to know, and I don't know if it's a foregone conclusion, but if we need a board member to volunteer to be on the study committee, I'm happy to do that, knowing that maybe someone else was already in mine. But, and I was just wondering to you folks, what, what sort of criteria do you think the AOE and the State Board will be looking for? Is it purely formality or are they concerned or are they sort of checking for financial stability? I'm just wondering what, what, what's, what would be an example of an successful pitch?
The last center that has gone through this was 2004. It's been a while. So, yeah. So I don't think that they're looking for anything in particular, only that the districts are willing to have a start, look into the study committee. And you know, I, I think as long as it looks to benefit students, it needs to be a benefit to our students as far as I'm concerned. A broader, more equal voice across the region is a direct benefit for our students. Having a board that would be able to focus purely on CTE and the programming and the connections we need to have with industry and post-secondary, I think is a direct impact for students. So I, I think as long as we're able to show that that makes sense to make a move like that, that the, the board may be in support, that's the first leg actually. Because the next one, the bigger one, is the actual vote by the towns. And, and we'd go through that vote every year. It's quite a big undertaking and I try not to think of how big it is because I'd like to just continue these more intimate conversations instead of trying to project so far out. But I don't think they have any preconceived notions about what they think this should or shouldn't be. They just want to make sure that everybody has a voice and has been well-informed and understands what this means.
Was your hand up again or did you just not take it down?
I just forgot to lower it.
Okay. Excellent. Are we at the point where I want to make a motion?
Sure. I, I move to approve the Central Vermont Career Center request to establish a governance study committee to determine if a governance change is appropriate for the Central Vermont Career Center.
Great. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have second.
Had a tie there. Anna, you can choose. Any discussion? Great. Jill?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Andrew? Andrew.
Hi.
Mia.
Hi.
Jerry.
Hi.
And Amanda.
See, yeah.
Um, so I I have a question, actually, Jim, before we go on to the second motion. Um, do we need, because that we're going to be talking probably in the next month or so about another committee. Um, and I don't want to get too far ahead of myself right now. Um, but would we be able to, do we have to appoint this person tonight? Is is my question, because if we're going to be talking about some other committee things in the next month. I'm wondering if we might want to just save this appointment for then.
Jill's excited, Andrew. I don't know.
All right, all right.
Like she was right to go.
The thing is, I know she's going to be excited about another committee too. Because a committee she was on uh, was suspended. Um, so.
Oh.
Let's leave that up to Jill. Jill, you want me to move ahead with the motion?
Yeah, I'm not reading between the lines.
Yeah, I'm I'm confused as well.
I don't want to get too.
Fantastic on this committee, I think.
Yeah, you'd be amazing, of course.
Your voice would be great for Penny to have.
Yeah, I think we should uh, I think we should go with an enthusiastic volunteer while we have one.
Sounds good.
I move to elect Jill Remick um, to serve as the Montpelier Roxbury School District Representative on the C V C C Governance Study Committee.
Second.
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 I think that was via. Great. Um, any discussion? Uh, Jill.
Hi, and thank you.
Emma.
Hi.
Annika.
Hi.
Uh, Ryan.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Uh, Mia.
Hi.
Jerry.
Hi.
And Amanda.
See, yes.
Great. Um, well, thank you so much for the presentation. This is great work you're doing and we really appreciate um, taking time out of your evening to to educate us more about this. Um, and we look forward to having Jill serve and be part of the process going forward.
That's great, Jim and the rest of the board. I appreciate uh, all of you participating in this process. If I can make sure that your motion to approve us moving into the study is actually in your minutes. I'll be asking for a copy of those minutes as part of our our record and our documents moving through this process. Um, it sounds like it all went smoothly and worked really well. Um, so I don't know if anyone wants to ask any other questions about other topics or things that that you're interested or curious about. Uh, we do have a re-envisioning process that's moving forward and tomorrow night we're hosting um, many of our major employers in the region. In a conversation about what programs should be at the center. What type of things that we might be able to consider in uh, changing in programs, delivery. Uh, how to best meet the needs of our employers and our post-secondary partners. So that's happening uh, tomorrow night, which is exciting. So all of this is kind of running side by side as we move forward into uh, re-envisioning of the career center for our our region. If there's other questions, I'd be glad. I've got a group of folks here who could help answer some questions if anyone is curious about any of that.
Yeah, I was like, Amanda has a question.
Um, I don't have a question, I guess more, well, yes, it's a question with a comment, I guess. Um, just I think a lot about ra- racial equity and um, just thinking about that there's a grow um, movement around BIPOC businesses in the state. Um, there was a survey that was sent out by the Diversity Partnership Group, Curtis Reed. Um, and and I'm just wondering about partnership with BIPOC employers as well as offering a multilingual for our multilingual families that are coming in or that are in our state. Um, and so just like thinking about that, about resources around that and how um, that is in your envisioning and how that is included around the racial equity. And uh, Susanna Davis also, the racial equity director, also came out with a uh, equity impact assessments tool that is really great to think about when we are building new policies and new governing structures that I can share with you, Penny, but uh, it's just like that. As I say, there's a, it's just a move to be thinking about how we're incorporated equity in every level of our work and the push to support the BIPOC businesses that are um, sprouting right now. It's so important to give our students that are um, you know, from different racial ethnic backgrounds space where they can feel at home as well. When they are, you know, entering into into this career choices, so. We'd love to talk more about it too, so it in any other time.
That would, that would be wonderful. I think if you could give some of those resources to Jill and have her bring those to the table as well with our governance work. Because that, you know, we're kind of going back and forth between these two groups, governance and re-envisioning. And and I would appreciate um, those resources myself and so I can bring that directly to the re-envisioning table. And know that there are going to be many, many more conversations about the career center and its future. Um, as we start to look at where are we going to go within our region? We're so far right now from Harwood and Cabot and Twinfield. We're on the other side of our region. And we need to move somewhere centrally, which is obviously closer to where you folks are. Uh, but in the process of looking at something as grand as a of a move of the career center, just for access alone. Um, we need to be looking at everything that encompasses a full service career center that has post-secondary industry and all the partners. Um, so it's a complex thing and we're just starting really in that process, so I would love to have any and all resources that you would like to share.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Andrea has his hand up as well.
Yeah, I, this is just like a five thousand foot question. In terms of keeping abreast of developments at the career center, both in terms of this initiative as well as the programming that you all work on and um, any events that you guys have. I know you guys have a calendar on your website. But are there any, are there any newsletters or social media handles that you'd suggest that members of the public or the board could follow or subscribe to to stay abreast of these developments, events, initiatives, et cetera?
Yes, and I'm going to ask our media media uh, direct, which is uh, Cal Hopwood, ask if he would like to chime in on that on that question.
Yeah, um, we do have a bit of a social media presence. Uh, we've been trying to bolster that as as a part of my second year media arts program, kind of allowing the students to take charge of that. And unfortunately, we were kind of very invested in that process and with COVID and everything, it's been a little bit more difficult in terms of um, just having access towards other programs and getting all that information out there. However, if you if you look at our website, um, we have lots of new videos that are coming out. Actually, um, all new program videos for each one of our programs have been coming out and the last two, I believe, should be out this week. So if you look at our website, which is C V T C C dot org, um, you'll be able to see all of our new content. But also, we are the shampoo or the the Central Vermont Career Center on Instagram. And we have some posts that we do there and also on Facebook as well. If you look up the the Central Vermont Career Center, you should be able to find us fairly easily.
Those new videos are awesome. The ones that I've seen so far are so well done.
Great. Thank you so much.
I have to say, Libby, that the the uh, rough cut footage that's created and all the photography is uh, through Cal's program, his students.
I don't doubt it. Cal, I don't know. I'm going to sing your praises a little bit. I've never met you. However, nice to see you. Um, the uh, two years ago, there was a student who spoke at our graduation when we could have graduation. And she spoke all about what must have been your program. Um, and she credited you and your program to to being who she was as a as a high school senior and a graduate. So you really uh, influenced this young lady quite a bit and I believe she went into digital digital media. So you're doing some good things over there.
Great. Thank you so much. I can't take all the credit. Matt, Matthew Benjano teaches the first year program and he's phenomenal, so he sets the sets the stage and foundation there, but thank you so much, Libby. Appreciate that.
In our line of work, you take credit where credit is due.
Thank you, Cal.
Good. Uh, other questions for any Scott, Cal and No, thank you again. Uh, again, this is great work you're doing. We're very excited and uh, Jill will represent us moving forward and we look forward to hearing more about how the process process goes and how the with the study committee concludes and what the next steps are.
And I want to thank Michael DeWes for helping us with uh, our work so far and willing to continue with us, which is a big, big help for us. And we look forward to uh, bringing some information back to you all and keeping you informed. Check out our websites and and the connections that uh, Cal just mentioned. I wish you all the best and I hope you have a great break next week. And we can start looking at uh, the end of this COVID pandemic year. It would be nice to see some sort of normalcy and everyone stay well. Um, but feel free to reach out to us anytime and as soon as we're able to bring visitors in, we welcome folks to stop by and uh, see kids in action because the kids love talking about their work and showcasing their their work. So we would be really excited to do that when when the pandemic allows us to do that.
Great, thank you. Yes, we we are looking forward to in person as well. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, did you see the comment in the chat?
What? Yes, I did. Thank you. Thank you so much. Please, I'm going to talk in Spanish.
Um, so before we move to policy, there are a couple of things I neglected to uh, add at the agenda. One is um, uh, was of help from Andrew uh, and review by Libby up together a letter to the governor that the Anderson around, I think yesterday. Um, just expressing concern over the uh, the move to go to full in-person in April and some of the concerns that we uh, talked about last time. Um, I just wanted to give some chance for feedback on that uh, before we send it. If folks have edits or questions about it. Mia?
Did we receive any clarification about what they mean by going to it in person? I'm wondering if what we are, what we've already put in place would qualify as in-person.
I'm going to say it does, but I don't, I don't know if the secretary would say the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we don't have, so I guess that's a, we don't have clarification by what they mean as in-person.
We don't, no.
Okay, the reason I was asking the question is um, that I I, if if what we're doing meets the in-person standard, then I don't know how hard we need to advocate for them to not have the standard, knowing that there are um, districts doing all much different versions of school than we are and that in some of those districts, they might benefit from the nudge, but um, but since we don't have that clarity. Um, and since what we are doing definitely works. Yeah, then I'm I guess that's it.
I think we can speak from M R P S perspective. Right? This is, this is our perspective. We're not speaking for any other district. We're speaking for our district and what we've put in place and what we can and cannot do. Um, I think in as long as we do that, um, it goes a long way for our educators. Uh, that the people in leadership who they're looking to to lead them are are speaking up for them and the good work they're doing.
Yeah, and especially with the um, the combination of going to in-person, whatever they mean by that, and not prioritizing teachers um, with vaccines. I definitely second that.
Yep.
Amanda, Jill, you had your hand up and put it down. You question answered. Uh, Amanda?
Yeah, I mean, I think um, the letters I, what, how can I say this? Um, I I think it needs a little bit of a tweaking, so in the second, it doesn't seem like we're speaking for our district alone. But that we are speaking to like the second paragraph of saying for one, many districts have in-person systems that are effectively achieving. I would like to see more of showing who we are and what we're doing and say how effective we have been at it. I think more proactive and say, this has worked for us. Um, and it it just, it seems to me what I, how I read is a little bit passive aggressive, to be honest with you. Um, so, but, you know, I, it's if you want to send it like that, that's fine, but like I I would, I would, I would highlight more of how much, how effective we have been and how great uh, job that district has done, Libby and you know, all the administrators. Uh, and that our concerns are based in that we have built a system that, you know, works and that has been proven effective in that. And then, you know, the hardship, what it means, which is in in that last far, because I, you know, I I appreciate the um, the vaccine piece for the educators. And I can, I I can, after the meeting, send you track changes if that is helpful, but it, we could also just I also won't not approve if that you want to just go with what you have.
Um, okay, I mean, if others share those concerns, definitely happy to get a run at it. Um, I'm, I'm okay either way. Emma?
Yeah, as I'm reading over it, I am um, I'm sort of thinking it might be, we might be better served or more effective by just speaking uh, more directly, like Libby said, to our district in those first um, four paragraphs, like just saying, we believe in what we've created and and we don't want to change what we're doing this late into the year. And just being very clear and giving some example, you you've given a couple of examples, but just highlighting those and just being a little bit more like, direct to the point, you know, and not as, not speaking broadly to other schools. Because I sense that maybe Mia might be right in terms of like, this could be a little bit of overkill for what they actually are talking about in terms of in-person instruction. And so it may be that we are already offering that and I think that we can just speak to what's working in our district and be a little more short and sweet succinct about it.
Well, I guess there's a question like, do we need it at all? I mean, if we feel yeah, because we wrote it, it sounded like there was going to be a harder call for in-person that would be difficult for many districts, including ours, to comply with.
I go back to.
I mean, I'm okay not, I'm okay, you know, not saying if we feel we're in compliance and we don't need to raise the issue.
I go back to the larger issue. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jim. Um, I go back to the larger issue of um, it matters to our educators that you wrote this. And it will matter to our educators that you wrote this. Um, and it will it's, it's an added stress that I have told them that I will fight tooth and nails to not um, because because of the work they're doing. And so I think if their board, their school board, and whether it's a political statement or not from the state piece. Um, I think it goes a long way for for the educators who are working hard for our students. So I would advocate you, you do write it or you do send it. Um, you can make, you couldn't take that feedback and make it more specific to M R P S. Um, because that's the system we know, right? And we can't speak for other systems. Um, however, I I think most educators in other systems. However, I think most educators in other systems probably feel the same way. Don't put extra stress on her, on us. But at the same time, we know MRPS. So you could take that feedback and put, we can work on some really specific pieces that MRPS has in place and some specific challenges to changing our system and with six weeks left to school, left for school. So, but yeah, I think, I think it matters to the educators at MRPS.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that was, there you're right. That was part of President written. Andrew?
Yeah, I had two things I wanted to say, and one was exactly what Libby just said, which is we are an employer of a lot of talented people and a lot of talented people who are putting a lot of energy and, you know, they're, they're, they're putting, they're putting themselves in a very difficult position. Let's be real. And I think we, we need to advocate for them. That's what we, as a board, as an administration, you know, we are a major employer and we need to be a good employer. And that means, you know, going to bat at a higher policy level for, for them from time to time. So I think, I think it's important that we, we do write this, but at the same time, I really love the points that I've heard, you know, from Emma, Amande, Mia, you know, from my perspective, and I think Libby has articulated this well in the past, MRPS can essentially serve as an example for the state on this. We have, we have achieved some excellent results. We do have pretty frequent comparatively in-person learning opportunities in our district. And I think we can actually serve as kind of, you know, maybe, we don't know exactly what the governor meant by that statement. It was in his inaugural address. I, I don't believe there's been any clarity since then. Is that correct, Libby? And, you know, he's, he's, he's our state's leader on this issue. And I think some of it is visionary, what he's putting out there in an inaugural address. I'm certain some of it is. So, you know, maybe we help. I feel like we have an opportunity to say, you know, hey, hey, Governor, we appreciate what you're saying and we think that what we're doing could serve as a model for the state. That's, that's one approach.
Jill?
Yeah, I'll try to be quick because I don't want to be redundant. I echo everything everyone said. I'm, I really appreciate you writing it. I have no edits. I think because we're writing it from a place of success and from, you know, here we are, we're coming up on February break. Still going. Kids are going to school every day. I, I think it's that much more powerful, frankly. I think it's really unfortunate that they put a lot of districts in the position of even having to articulate that when this fall, it was like, well, every district's different. So everyone gets to figure out their own. And I, I think frankly, what, what Libby and her team created is a pretty elegant and frankly, I, as a parent, am finding it a pretty successful, incredibly successful structure for this year. So I think coming from that place to Andrew's point about being actually an example. And also that being said, and also can we finish this year strong and supporting our teachers and not creating yet another wave of change at this point in the year? So I'm, I'm glad you're doing it. And I, once again, think it's fantastic what we've accomplished this year.
I totally agree. So how do we want to go forward? I'm happy to give another round of changes. We acknowledge that we probably wouldn't be able to set it off until after break in March. If there's small changes, we could, I don't want to draft right now, but I guess, I guess either either we can do another round of edits, people can, can redline it. You know, send it on and we can look again at March 3rd. Or if we feel that it's generally there, I can make, I could add a little more, a few more examples. Work with Libby on that, make a little more district specific and send it off the next few days.
Well, have people had an opportunity to provide like comments other than just in this, this setting right now? Because like Amande said, she would be happy to send along track changes. I know Mia was really, really helpful for, for my perspective, writing the op-ed for the budget. So that's, that's something.
I think if it's tweaks, like, you know, a few things here, people can send that separately. The problem is we can't, we can't work on a Google Doc out of the session or becomes an unwarranted meeting. So if people feel there's kind of like tweaks they can provide, they can send them to me individually and I can incorporate it into a different letter. And, you know, add a few examples with Libby. If, you know, people feel it needs a major rewrite, then I feel we probably need to come back and discuss it as a group before we send it off. And I heard, I, I heard some people say largely okay with it, few tweaks, like change the thing a bit. And I also heard maybe a larger rewrite was necessary. Amande, your hands up?
Yeah. For me, like I said, I think it needs changes, but I'm okay with just sending enough if, if it's the case of waiting until March, I'd rather just send it as is.
Ryan?
Sure. I was just going to say I would offer a motion that we essentially appoint Jim as board chair authority to finish the letter based on the feedback that we've just had in this discussion. And when he as chair feels comfortable with that, to submit it to the governor's office at that point in time, I think time was a bit important in this topic. We don't want to send this out after we get back for March break and we're what, a few weeks away from that April deadline in a sense. So I think we'd probably be better off just to kind of move along and allow Jim the authority to kind of continue and wrap it up.
A second?
And then? Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I think, I, I think essentially there's two paragraphs early on that can, that can just be kind of overhauled and we could add some more examples and make it a little bit more MRPS specific, but I think the general thrust of it doesn't need to be changed very much. That's my two cents. And Jim, I, I'm happy to work with you and Libby, or if you're really tied up, I'm happy to spend a little bit of time this weekend on it.
Yeah, I think we can likely get out Monday and appreciate that. It was, did that count as a second?
Yeah. So with that in mind, I, I second Ryan's motion.
Any discussion? And I am not, Amande, did you put your hand up again? Or is that from? Was that from last time?
Same hand.
Discussion? Jill?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Mia?
Hi.
Amande?
Yes.
Jerry?
Hi.
Great, thanks. And yeah, I'll work on it this weekend. So, you know, feel free to send, send suggested edits beforehand. And I'll try to incorporate as many as possible. And yeah, Andrew, I definitely will take you up on your offer to help with that. So. Great. And the other matter I wanted to bring up, which is super important is this is, Ryan has sadly informed us that he is not going to seek another term. And I just want to acknowledge his great service. And this is going to be, I believe, your last meeting. So Ryan was, has been on the Roxbury Board for several years before being a, a real leader in that community in terms of making the merger happen. He served on the merger committee and very thoughtfully led that community through that process. And then joined the, the newly formed Montpelier Roxbury Board and has been a super thoughtful and super dedicated board member on this board. And I know he was, yeah, obviously wasn't serving with him on the Roxbury Board, but I know he was for several years there as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge all your great work. So it's been fantastic working with them. Really gonna, kind of miss having your, your thoughtful voice on the board, but I also know you've put in your time and you know, as you, as you said, your wife, your wife said she was no longer willing to vote for you. So that's, that's probably the signal you need that you've done your time. But, but a huge thanks for all you've done and we really appreciate the fantastic, fantastic work you've put in over, over many years.
Well, thank you, Jim. I appreciate all those kind words. And I think, I think it's probably public at this point in time in Roxbury as well, since the ballot is out there with no name on it. Could say at this point in time also that the person that had been kind of recruited to replace me has ended up not being able to do so. And next potential recruitment was going to be joining us this evening, which I'm not seeing in the audience list. So that might not be as promising as it's been hoped for. So yes, any Roxberians out there watching the meeting tonight, please reach out. There's going to be an open spot on the board that I would be looking for a great person to fill. And I know it truly, it's been, saw my wife after dinner tonight, coming down to the meeting. It's been eight years I've been doing this board work. It's been a big part of my life and I'm going to have to make sure that I find some good stuff to fill it up with. So I don't have a big void. And you know, like I truly hope that at some point in time, I've been able to make some contributions that have provided some good things for some of our students' lives. And yeah, best of luck to all of you and your future work. And I'll come to the informational meeting just for the heck of it, right? So squeeze one more in before fully retire.
Would you say, Ryan, I value your opinion too much and there's plenty of committees for you to join on too?
And I can say from the Roxbury side that he is very much appreciated in our community for all of the work he's done. It's, and I mean, so, so much dedication. So you've definitely done your time, Ryan. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate everything.
Yeah. And if you need any, any help recruiting in Roxbury, I think we're all happy to help.
Couple more weeks for a write-in candidate.
Yeah, cool. And I'm sure this way I hope it's not you. All right. What was that?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, no, thank you again. And yeah, you're, you're willing to join us, of course, anytime. And with Zoom, it's always easy to be in the audience. I know. Tina, Tina makes guest appearances relatively frequently. So.
Jim, I've got a question.
Yes.
First of all, Ryan, thanks for, it's, it's, thanks for serving all these years. I, I, yeah, I haven't had a chance to work with you closely for as much as I wanted, but thanks for all your service. My question is now that Ryan's leaving about committees on the negotiation side, do we, do we appoint somebody now? Do we appoint somebody after the election, assuming somebody will replace Ryan?
Yeah. So we'll appoint, we have to actually reappoint everything on March 3rd. We have to reorganize. That will not be a huge task because I mean, the only real unknown is, is Ryan's seat. But you know, we have three open positions and three uncontested races. So I'm guessing, given the early ballots out there, that Emma, Mia and Amande probably already have what they need to get over the finish line. So I, so we will, we'll reappoint. I think the big question will be, Ryan, and if, if, you know, we may not have, we may have an open seat. Depending on what happened with Roxbury, you know, it sounds like there's not someone currently on the ballot. So we may have to do, do some outreach. So it may just be keeping, keeping some vacancies. But I think on negotiations in particular, we would probably want to move someone onto that seat on March 3rd because that's.
Annika, are you particularly worried about the, the negotiations that you and Ryan have been involved in?
Especially Ryan's been leading that. So now with him gone.
After your performance the other night, Annika, you got, no, you're fine. Ryan, you would have been proud of him.
It was, it was spreadsheet wizardry.
I'm always, always proud of him.
Yeah, but we will, we will find someone to help you, Annika. You can, we don't have to do it now, but you, you may want to, you may want to start privately lobbying. All right. Policy monitor, we have the Prevention of Harassment, Hazing and Bullying F20 and the F28 Federal Child Nutrition Act Wellness Policy. Do you have any, any question or discussion around those?
I have a question.
Yep.
So when we're monitoring the policy, we're just looking at what the policy is, just trying to understand. And is there data that can support some of the policies that come with it? And what can the board access in terms of data around the haze and bullying harassment policy? To look at what, what's working and what's not working?
What data are you interested in?
In bullying harassment and being segregated by disability and race and all of it. Everything that you collect, basically, what can we have? But I, I think for me, it's important to be able to, you know, like be data driven to like, if we need to change a policy that's not working, how do I know if it's not working? And what kind of data backs it up? In terms of the bullying harassment, for example, what kind of data are you collecting and what are we allowed to see or not see?
So the HHB policy, they're pretty specific parameters as to when that type of investigation is initiated. And so for instance, this year, we've probably initiated like three. So there, that's too small of a size to be able to bring to the board in terms of any times of, any type of specific data. And it's, and we don't have, we don't have a significant amount of HHB investigations throughout a school year to be able to disaggregate it, disaggregate it by different, by special education or by, by racial ethnicity. It's just not a big, a big enough number for us. We don't do that many investigations. And that policy is very specific as to when an investigation is started.
Is there, is there any way to look at like a tenure, like what has happened in the district? Just like to inform anything? And where does that data go? Does that, that data go straight to the AOE?
No, it doesn't go to the Agency of Education. If, if the board, if the full board would like me to try to gather that, I can see what's available. I don't think we could get 10 years of data because I, I just don't know what kind of systems we had before my tenure as superintendent to collect it and keep it. But I can see what we can gather if the board would like me to gather that kind of information.
Mia?
I guess one of the questions for me is that this policy addresses like when we have, when someone reports an incident, we have to follow through on it. But the policy doesn't address or, or set any sort of benchmark for like prevention of it or, or like any sort of way of measuring it, whether or not we're, we're being successful at limiting bullying or harassment from happening. So it just, to me, it makes me think we probably need a follow-up policy or an update. This is one of the ones that's mandated, right? From the state, we have to have this. So maybe what we need is an additional policy that is like a following up on it. We have these values that we hold as a district. And so to, to follow through on those values, this is what we would like to see in, you know, in, in the district in terms of preventing harassment and bullying in the first place or something like that. In, you know, in, in the district in terms of preventing harassment and bullying in the first place or something like that.
You can add, the, the board can add to the policy, the language that's in this, but there's some policies that are written by lawyers. And this is one of them. And so basically the VSB will say, this is your policy. You can add to it, but you can't change it.
Can't take anything out of it.
Right, exactly. Exactly. So you could, the policy committee and the board could look at this policy and say, could we add to this policy for expectations around monitoring? Absolutely, that's your prerogative to do just what you're saying. But yeah, you, you can't change what the policy actually says because it was probably written by lawyers for the VSB.
Yep.
Emma?
This policy has become a sort of topic of interest during the School Safety and Police Relations Committee work. And one of the main reasons is because in all of our surveying of stakeholders. In that work that we did and that data that we collected, bullying was the number one concern among different stakeholder groups. I think in particular guardians and community members. And so that we've, we heard several stories, you know, in some of that qualitative feedback. Around bullying and how it was handled or, or not handled. And so it does seem like a concern in our community, bullying in particular. And so I kind of agree, you know, I, my wheels are spinning a little bit as a member of the policy committee. And now not having Ryan on that committee to help us navigate these conversations.
You're it, Emma.
Well, we'll have, we'll have to recruit another person, right? So in the implementation section of the actual policy. The language, you know, this is one of the things that kind of comes to mind in terms of what Amanda brought up to was the, I think it's number. Four, under implementation, it says we will respond to notifications of possible violations of this policy. In order to promptly and effectively address all complaints of hazing, harassment or bullying. So I'm wondering like just in your analysis of whether we were in compliance, the word effective, that's the one that sort of pops out as, you know, what are, what is our measure of success? In terms of effectively handling, you know, a, a bullying complaint. From the time that it's filed to the time that it's resolved.
From, so from my perspective, here's one of the rubs for this policy is that a parent or a guardian. Will call something bullying that, that doesn't fit the definition according to the law. So the law is that somebody, some, a child is targeted repeatedly over and over. And that's what qualifies as bullying. And oftentimes what happens with parents that I've seen is that if their child is picked on at any point in time. That, that, that it's called, it's named bullying. And that very well could be true in, in the layman's term of what bullying means. But according to the law, that's not what bullying means. It's the same kid picking on the same kid consistently over time. That equals bullying and that's a hard bar to prove. Harassment is actually easier to prove from a school, from the definitions.
What do we, so the language is just that it's repeated over time?
Yeah, like an intent to ridicule something.
But so do two incidences count, you know, as being repeated? Or are you reading, I mean, what's the read on that?
It depends on the situation. Like there's no one right answer to that, right? So I had a parent write to me the other day that said, my kid has been bullied because she was pushed, like they were at recess and she was pushed over at recess. And, and my kid's bullying and they're not doing anything about it. And it's like, no, that wouldn't even, that wouldn't even start an investigation. That's what happens on the playground sometimes, you know? So it's really tricky with this policy because of the definitions. And so if you, if we really dug into the data. Based on the definitions of this law and this date and this policy that we're, that is mandated. There's not a lot of data to dig into. We do investigate quite a few throughout the year, but not a sign, not as many as parents would like us to. So that's one big challenge. If a kid is called a name, that's not bullying necessarily.
But something that would fall under harassment, right?
If it's targeted against a race, a religion, a sex, something like that, yes. That's what, we, we investigate actually more harassment cases than we do bullying cases.
So since this is like the bullying, harassment and hazing policy.
Yeah.
When, when you went, you know, I'm, I'm curious to Amanda's point about data. Like if we could know how many cases of harassment are, how many complaints are filed of harassment? And then how many of those cases are investigated? And then how many of those, you know, what is our measure of success? Is there like a, some sort of process where the complainant like fills out a form and says, yes, I'm satisfied with the outcome? Or, or how do we measure, you know?
There's no, there's no like satisfaction. You, as a board, you could certainly put that into your policy. That the superintendent will report out on the, on the number of HHB investigations that are conducted in a school year. Absolutely. You are more than welcome to, to add that to your policy. Again, you can add things to this policy. You just can't take anything out of this policy. In terms of contentment of the outcome. It's, it's, it's a people's perception are their reality in this, in this situation, right? And so there's a couple of things that compete with that. Because of FERPO, we're not allowed to talk about consequences of other people's children, right? So I'll just use you as an example. If Soren picks on Fiona, right? And we find Soren guilty of harassing Fiona, Jim's child, which I don't think he would do. But if, if that were true, we couldn't tell Jim what consequences Soren had. Jim will demand it. Believe me, he will man, demand it and say, I want to know what kind of discipline this child has. But we wouldn't be able to tell him that because of FERPO rights. And so often parents are not satisfied with the outcome because we're not allowed to talk about the outcome with other people's children to them. So that would be a hard, that would be a hard burden of proof for us as a district or the board. Like I, I don't know what kind of evidence I would bring in terms of satisfaction. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess I'm just interested in the language that you used in your compliance report. In terms of evidence and a lot of it was just like, yes, we have these people in place and these systems in place. But I guess I, I was more interested in, you know, we've successfully and promptly and effectively resolved, you know. Eighty percent of our cases or something like that.
Yeah, then put that language into the policy. Then, then next year's policy monitoring will have that, that inside of it. Absolutely. That's your prerogative as a policy committee and as a board.
But so what was it? I'm sorry, I'll just say one more thing and then I can move on. But so was it more of like a qualitative, like a conversation with the equity coordinator around like, do you feel like we've effectively? The, so the language again in the, in the policy is promptly and effectively addressed all complaints?
Yeah, I would say we have because we're, we're, that is regulated for us. So if you look at the procedural document, when a legitimate complaint is made. Then we have to immediately start certain steps. Does that make sense? Like, I mean, parents could sue us if we don't, right? So we, we immediately start that and that's what the procedure is there for. And so, so our view of effective may be a different definition of a parent's view of effective.
Mia?
I think Andrew might have actually had his hand up before me.
Okay, you're, you're, you're on.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, I'll take it. I, yeah, what's, what this is making me realize is that this policy feels like the floor. And what we could be reaching for is a, is a higher standard. Of, if, you know, if, if we want to center that around the effectiveness of. The, the. Investigation or whatever, that seems good. And I think we could also. Look at what is it like, if, if bullying is. A pretty high bar legally in this definition, then maybe we as a community, when we think about what are our values around the, the social and emotional learning? That bullying has a really detrimental effect on. Like maybe we could be saying, yes, this is what the legal definition of bullying is. And in our community, while it doesn't necessarily trigger this like deep investigation, we do have a process that we follow. When there is something like a push on the playground or two incidences instead of 12 or whatever. So anyway, this is, that's the wheels that are turning in my head. And I, whatever process it is that we need to start to ask the, the policy committee to start to do that work, I'd like to, to start that. So I think it would start with the policy committee, right?
Yeah, I would definitely start with the policy.
Has Amanda and Emma, now that Ryan is not.
Yeah, it would definitely start with the policy committee. Andrew?
So a couple of things. One is, I, I think this conversation around, you know, what data are we collecting? You know, how we, how are we measuring success? Those, those types of discussions are really, really important. I think something that we need to keep in mind too, I'm just adding this as one other just consideration. That we need to keep in mind as a board, there's, there's a lot of laws and a lot of really great laws. At the federal and state level that are in place to protect individuals' privacy and confidentiality. And we will bump into those because we have a small, we have, we have a, I, I was looking at the, the data even from central, from the Central Vermont Career Center. And for Montpelier, in certain programs, there's only one or two people and it would be very easy to identify people that way. So however we're doing this, we, we do need to keep in mind. You know, however, we're measuring success, doing it in ways that we can collect meaningful data, but that won't. That, that won't come in conflict with those laws. That's something that we're going to have to consider. And I think it's going to be, you know, some of what you were proposing just before, I think, I think would work, you know? So, but that's just something that I think we're going to have to consider. And then the other thing is just the policy committee in general, this whole conversation, I've been thinking about this lately. Our policies when we merge as a district were completely overhauled. And the two main people who have worked on, or who, who worked on the policy committee for the past, what? Like three to five years, Jim, were Ryan and Bridgette. They did most of the heavy lifting and they're gone. And we do need to have, the policy committee is a really, really important committee. And I do think we need three people on that committee. So that's just something to think about heading into next month. But it's, it's, it's a really important committee and it's one that has lost, you know, two people who were doing a very, very heavy lift for a long time. There was a lot, a lot of work being done and frankly, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done and we're talking about it right now. So, and we, this, this new configuration of the board hasn't really dealt with new policies. Cause it, it, it's an iterative process where the policy committee takes something, provides something, provides a justification for it. And then board members will propose different ideas. Sometimes policies have come, since I've been, my short time on the board, policies have come to us. And the board says, this isn't going to work for X, Y and Z. This isn't going to work. And it goes, you know, back to the drawing board and then comes back again. So this is, it can be a very iterative process and it's an important committee and these are important issues. So thanks, everyone.
The other thing to consider with that, Andrew, is that policy, policy should be written, rewritten or revisited every three years. And we're at that point. So next year, the policies will need to be re-voted on, I guess. So, so it's a, it's a big, it's a big bulk of work that the board will need to do in the next school year.
Yeah, no, definitely. That's, that should be something we, we definitely look at. On March 3rd. Yeah, and I'll get you just a second, Amanda. Yeah, is, is, is making sure we've got a, a good policy. Amanda?
Yeah, so I, I mean, part of it is. I, I hear you, Andrew, around like the number of BIPOC folks that we have in our district and like, well, there has to be a way for us to like think like, so is it? Is it that Libby then takes that or like the district as a whole, like the staff is looking at that data? Because to be able to inform policy, like we need to really see what's happening, right? Like so if, let's say that it, in literacy, we don't, we as a board don't know that BIPOC students have lower rates. And I'm just making this up than everything else. How do we continue those conversations? And how do we make policies if we don't know? If, if what we're using as disaggregated data is like, you can't look at it because of, of privacy, but the district can look at it. Teachers are looking at it, principals are looking at it. So how do we inform our policies so that we're not blind about what's actually happening on the ground? So I think it's important because we know that, you know, our rates for people with disability, graduation rates for people with disability were not, you know, high. Like those are things that we should be informed around, like the data that's happening in the district. I'm just making this up, you know, let's say that all BIPOC students were, you know, have the lower literacy rates. And kids with disability, like suspension rates, all of that really makes us, like it's important to look at the data. Because how do we get better at things if we don't know what the numbers are, right? So I think that we, it's not a yes or no, it's about like just dreaming about what procedures we can do to. If, if we can look at it, then like what are the ways that we can be informed? And that it's attached to that equity policy that we have. And it's attached with that, you know, this framework that we are really moving to supporting BIPOC students, students with disabilities. And students from the LGBTQI communities. I think it's important for us to like, just like dream big about what we can get and not put like the blocks already. If we cannot get it, well, what are the ways around it that we look at that? So I, I think that, I, I want to just make a motion that, you know, we look at this policy in the policy committee. And like start thinking about questions that we have and, and whatnot. And I agree, all these policies from ESBA are the floor. In their own words, the floor, and we can add a lot of things to it. So here we are.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to clarify, when I was talking about the numbers, I was talking about the Central Vermont Career Center. And looking just within programs for Montpelier and some of those programs, you only have one student or two students. And if we receive data as a board in a public space about those students. And there's only one student in this one program, we, we probably can't receive information about one student in a public sphere like that. That's, it's, it's probably going to be in violation of FERPO, I have to imagine. So, I mean, yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to get too far down this road right now. But it, it's, I under, I hear what you're saying, Amanda. And I do think that there are ways that we can get meaningful information from the district. But I don't think publicly sharing information about one or two students is going to be something that we're going to be able to do at any point.
And that's definitely now what I'm asking, Andrew. I don't think that's what I'm asking around, you know, getting one student or two. I think that there are ways to do this, that we can look at the impact, is an impact assessment, right? Like any policy that we do, we need to think about what are the impacts that is going to have in marginalized communities or not.
Well, it sounds like there's a strong desire for the policy. I don't think we need a motion on it. I think we can just set it on the policy committee's agenda for the policy committee to revisit this policy. I, I strongly suggest that that work be done in consultation with the VSB. Which has legal services on this and our district lawyers. Because I, I, I agree that we want as much data as we can to inform both the policy and then also kind of the reporting requirements of Libby. But we do have to respect the rules because not doing so would subject the district to potential enormous liability. So, so I, I, I think we can thread that needle, but let's, let's make that kind of a top priority of the, of the policy committee moving forward. I think we had a motion, let's, let's make sure we had a motion to approve the, the two policy reports. I don't think we ever got to the motion stage. And are there questions on the Child Nutrition Act Wellness Policy? And are there questions on the Child Nutrition Act Wellness Policy? All right, so a motion to approve F 20 prevention of harassment, hazing and bullying and the, also the report on F 28, the Federal Child Nutrition Act Wellness Policy?
Sorry, Jim, to approve what?
The two policy monitoring reports.
And what am I approving?
We're just basically saying that, that Libby gave them to us and we received them and they're acceptable.
Oh, but I would like to make, to go and check the bullying harassment policy and make changes. So is that approving this?
It's not, we're, we're not, we're not acting on the policy. We're just acting on the report. Like Libby, Libby is reporting on the existing policy. She's not, so we're not, the discussion was that the existing policy needed revision, but we're not acting on the policy. We're just acting on her, her monitoring report on the existing policy. So she's just telling us about compliance with existing policy.
Oh, can you rephrase that then? So we're not with, that we are approving the monitoring piece of it?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking for a motion to do that. From Jill, do you want to make it?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. So I move that we accept the submitted policy monitoring reports for, let's see, can we do them both together?
Yes.
Policy F 20 and F 28?
Um, any discussion? Jill?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Annika?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Uh, Amanda?
Aye.
And Jared?
Aye.
Great, thank you. I think we're on to superintendent evaluation and Libby, I think you can go enjoy your family. And now, do, do we need, do we need?
Motion to go into the executive session?
We need a motion to go to executive session. We also need, Libby doesn't have to be around to do this unless she does, it can Anna put us into, Anna put us into a breakout room? That's not publicly accessible?
I've already got you in breakout rooms. Jim, I'm going to make you the host.
Okay.
So you can.
Jim, do you know how to do that? Should we make somebody else the host? I mean,
Do you not have faith in me?
No, but seriously.
Emma, do you want to be the host?
I, I teach, I teach with Zoom. I, I do breakout rooms all the time. I can definitely do it.
Okay.
I cannot do it if I'm not the host, but.
No, I've already made the breakout room, but I'm going to move you to the host, Jim, and you may, I, I would assume the breakout room transfers to you, but if it doesn't, you may have to make it.
Okay, I will make it breakout room. And, and I, I, I do not blame Andrew for his lack of faith in me.
That was just mean.
You also might want to make me or somebody co-host. Just best practice, if you accidentally end the meeting, every, it will end for everybody unless there's a co-host.
I think Anna is the co-host, but.
I didn't realize she was still on.
Yeah, but Jim, nah, I've, I've given you my hosting duties. So now you could make Emma co-host if you want.
It's a good idea, Jim.
Has it, has it transferred? I'm not seeing.
It's a good idea.
Okay, now I've got the breakout room function. Okay, cool.
Hey, Jim, sorry, before we go, is, I, I sent you an email around the waiting pupil study and so that, that, like, we can't give just like a one minute question that I have around that? Like, I don't know if you saw that email that I sent you.
I did not see it, I'm sorry.
It, it, I, I guess I just send an email to everybody then after.
Yeah, if you want to ask it quickly.
Well, there is a coalition of school boards in the state that is currently working on the waiting pupil study and there, there's a bunch of meetings. There's a, they just hire a lobbying. So I, I, you know, I, I'm part of their Google group just because I was kind of monitoring some for Act One, but, so I, I don't know, like, I think that information is very interesting, like lots of things are happening in the legislation that my, that are going to affect us. And if people are interested in, in, I, I don't know how it will work. But I think it's really important that, that, that we are looking into that and I don't know who would like to do that. If anybody is interested in doing that, I think a, a lot of great things are happening. And I think eventually we will have to make decisions about, you know, whether we'll give testimony as a board or, or what, around what is happening and how that's going to affect our district. And I think we should all be informed of what that means for us, so. And I, I did send forward an email to Andrew around like that, that they just had a press conference and there's all kinds of reports and testimonies from Secretary French and from all kinds of things that will in, impact us quite a lot, actually, so.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm just saying that now. It was a forward from Maggie Lim. Yeah, no, I completely agree. Maybe we can add that as an agenda item on the third to talk about it and see who wants to monitor because it, it is going to have major impacts on the district. And probably quite a bit on Montpelier because it will, I think, greatly affect our, I mean, I think it's a fantastic thing for the state. But it may make some of our budgeting more difficult in the next couple of years because of the, the way that it's weighted right now and, and we're in a, a work community that probably will lose pupils as a result.
Right now, the models are suggesting that we'll lose 6% of our pupils, of our equalized pupils. And I know the legislature is talking about ways to make it come in over time, so it's not an immediate impact. But those legislative reports that you get from the V S B A and I get from the V S A are similar. They're, they're pretty much the same kind of legislative. I think they write them together. So those are things to really pay attention to for the waiting study in particular.
And that's like the equivalent of losing a grade.
Yeah, it's a big, it's, it's not small. Percent is big. It will, it will most definitely influence us.
Yep, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I missed that email and thank you for bringing that up. Let's put that on the third and talk a little more deeply about how we want to engage in that process. All right, so I have breakout room authority. We now need a motion to go into breakout rooms. We don't need magic language for this. We just need a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of personnel evaluation.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, Jill?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Annika?
Aye.
Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Amanda?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Aye.
So, so Libby and Anna can leave now? Is that right?
Jim's the host.
Yes.
Got control.
I'm the host.
Well, we'll have to come back to adjourn for Anna's minutes, right?
We'll just, one of us will just email Anna to tell her, her when we do that. She does not need to stick around.
Yeah.
I'll email Anna.
You got it, Jim?
I got it.
We have another co-host, right?
We, everybody obviously has total faith in you. Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Everyone just say aye, because I don't think anyone's going to.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Aye.
Thanks. Bye, goodnight. And Ryan, feel free to join us next time, but again, thanks so much for all you've done. Wish we could have you a proper, or give you a proper in-person send-off, but.
Sad to see you go, Ryan.
Bye, Ryan.
All right, thanks all.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.